All right, I am going to call this meeting of the Sparks Planning Commission to order at 6:00 PM on June 3rd, 2021. Madam Secretary, may we please have the roll? Here. Here.
Present.
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 Here.
Here.
Here. Here. All right, looks like we have everybody here. So we will go into our first period of public comment. Madam Secretary, could you please read the meeting announcement and then we'll open public comment? Oh, you don't? That's right, because we're, we don't have to do that anymore. All right. I have to adjust.
You have to zoom adjust.
So are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? I am seeing none, so we will close public comment and move on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Yep, I think Commissioner Kramer beat you to it, so we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola and a second by Commissioner Kramer. May we please call the roll?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to approval of the minutes. So first, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the March 4th, 2021 Planning Commission Study Session.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the study session for May 4th, 2021.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any discussion? All right, may we please have the roll?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. So now looking for a motion to approve all 289 pages of the minutes from our May 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, I have, I move to approve the magnanimous, the booklet of the minutes of May 6th, 2021.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Kramer and a second from Commissioner Andriola. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, may we please have the roll?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. So we have no, we have one public hearing item, which is CA-1-21.
Mr. Chair, could I make a disclosure?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to disclose on the record under NRS 281A.420 that I work for in C, an engineering firm that frequently performs work with contractors throughout Washoe County who could benefit from the proposed changes. After conferring with the city attorney's office, we agree that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected based on my position, and therefore this is not a disqualifying conflict of interest under state or local ethics laws, and I intend to vote on this item.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Reed. Are there any other commissioners who'd like to make a disclosure?
Mr. Chairman, I have a disclosure, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
Thank you very much. Before you opened this item, I wanted to make a public disclosure to you and my colleagues and for the record. In an effort to avoid conflicts of interest and enhance and maintain the public trust pursuant to NRS 281A.420, I'd like to disclose that I have an older brother who does work for a local concrete company and as such may be affected by the proposed code amendment today. Although he lives in a separate household, but because he is my brother and is within the third degree of consequinity, I practice that term all day long, as required by state law, I would like to disclose the nature of this relationship, the nature of the potential pecuniary interests or commitment in a private capacity to the interests of another person. Additionally, as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, or AICP, I am bound by an ethical code of conduct and professional code of ethics. In the spirits of the code, the principles us as AICP members are bound to uphold. I'd also like to make another disclosure on this item. The AICP code states that we shall avoid a conflict of interest or even the appearance of a conflict of interest without making a disclosure or recusing ourselves from an item. In accordance with the AICP code, I'd like to disclose that my brother does work for a local concrete company and may be impacted by the proposed code amendment today. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that because the proposed code amendment would impact the entire city and not just my brother's employer, I don't believe that the judgment of independence of judgment of a reasonable person would be maternally affected by my brother's position within the construction industry. I will note for the record that I don't believe that I have a conflict of interest under Nevada state law or the AICP code of ethics, and that I will be participating in these deliberations and will be voting on this item. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any others? All right, seeing none, go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager. I don't have any disclosures for our meeting today. But I am here to present on a potential code amendment to the Sparks zoning code, Title 20, the planners, you often hear us refer to it as. Currently, in the city of Sparks, our construction hours are identified as 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, with no work on Sunday. In my time at the city, approximately 20 years, these are the hours that we have enforced and obided by through plan development handbooks, special use permits, conditional use permits at one time were called special use permits, and administrative reviews or site plan reviews at one time. Currently, the Sparks Municipal Code provides flexibility to the administrator. Administrator by definition of code is the city manager or his designee. We have the ability to permit exemptions for certain circumstances. One of those might be to allow for a utility project to occur in public right-of-way at 2:00 AM. We can permit that in the interest of public safety. Another example may be to conduct a large concrete pour at early hours in the summertime. This week, it's been exceptionally hot for early June, 98 degrees, I think, at the airport yesterday. We may have had a request to do a large concrete pour and been able to allow for that with certain parameters. But again, we do have the ability to have that flexibility. What we've looked for in providing that flexibility in the past is a seven-day forecast, is what you see on the nightly news, the seven-day forecast. This is what it'll be like next weekend. We've utilized that to identify that the temperatures will be, in fact, be over 90 degrees on the request today to conduct the concrete pour. In January of this year, the city council voted unanimously to direct the city manager to have staff initiate conversations with industry representatives and identify the needs of potential amendments to the municipal code in terms of the construction hours. They also made a caveat that they wanted to minimize the number of research hours that staff conducted on that code amendment. So staff conducted two meetings with industry representatives. We met with Association of General Contractors, we met with the Builders Association of Northern Nevada, and we met with the, let's see, Associated Builders and Contractors. Did I say that one already? We got ABC, Association of General Contractors, AGC, and BAN. Those were the three. I think I've got them all. Sorry about that. We met with the two industry representatives and had very robust discussions where they identified that they would like to see the hours of construction amended from 7:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Additionally, they would like to see the temporary use permit, as I was just discussing, move from being issued for seven days to being issued for up to 30 days. The sentiment of the industry was that it was bureaucratic and took a lot of time to come in once a week, every week, to request the same permit to be done time after time. That was the industry sentiment. So they requested we move that seven-day issuance to 30 days, up to 30 days. As I identified earlier, staff looks to have a reason to extend outside of the adopted hours of construction, those that are codified. We tend to look at public safety components. We tend to look at something like excessive heat, like we talked about this week. It's been 98 degrees. At the study session on Tuesday, it was brought up on how many temporary use permits have we issued in terms of exemptions for construction hours. On the displays above, we have an exhibit that demonstrates that we issued 160 temporary use permits in four years, and there were 184 requests. There are unofficially more requests than that, whereas a contractor may call a city engineer or call me and discuss the probability of getting a temporary use permit issued, and we will let them know, thumbs up, thumbs down, and that way, sometimes they save themselves from applying for the permit and save themselves $100 for getting that temporary use permit. But Commissioner Carey, you had requested that we identify how many temporary use permits that we have considered. We started this program four years ago, and we have 160 that have been issued and 184. I believe Ms. Martinez handed you, provided you a handout that further identified the areas of town that those temporary use permits for construction hour deviations were provided for. The display did not reflect the detail that we have in that exhibit, so we provided it in a handout. And it will be part of the public record tomorrow. Another component of the discussions that we have had with the representatives of the industry was how it would affect plan developments. I believe there are 44 plan developments in the city of Sparks. Of course, those are unique zoning standards that are associated with a certain area of land recorded by a legal description and then ultimately, excuse me, associated with the legal description then ultimately recorded with the Washoe County Recorder to that become the city of Sparks zoning for that area. Example of a handbook would be the legends at Sparks Marina, Stone Brook, Wingfield Springs, Kylie Ranch. Those are all examples of some of the handbooks in the city of Sparks. This code amendment is an amendment to the Sparks Municipal Code. This code amendment would not affect any of the areas identified by plan development in this illustration because those areas are all called out in their own handbook that they have hours of construction of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, and no construction on Sunday. As those handbooks were developed in the early 2000s and 90s, they had those construction hours put into them, so they became the zoning ordinance for the respective land. Amendments to the municipal code such as this would not affect those standards in those plan development handbooks. When staff took the item back to the city council for a report based on their initial direction, in April, there was a robust discussion on the desires of the development community, which I've already shared with you. Again, the 5:00 AM start time from 7:00, and the temporary use permits being issued for 30 days. Ultimately, the city council made the direction to the city manager to craft language in the form of amendments to the Sparks Municipal Code for Sections 20.04005 in intensity standards and 20.03040 for temporary use permits to change the construction hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM. On Exhibit 2, Casey, can, Ms. Martinez, can you put that up? Exhibit 2 in your packet identifies this direction. This is Section 20.04005. Can we zoom in on that, Casey? Can you guys see that easier? Now, this is an exhibit in your staff report. It is a single strike of 7:00 AM, replacing it with 5:00 AM as the proposal. Exhibit 3, can you bring that up, please? Exhibit 3 in your packet identifies the components to the temporary use permit that staff is proposing to amend. This would provide the administrator with the qualifications to consider work outside of the codified construction hours. It would also provide our community with the direction on when we would consider a code amendment. The four components that we have proposed as staff is a large concrete pours, placement of structural steel, installation of roof-mounted equipment, and/or any use that generally promotes the safety of the general public. We kind of touched on that earlier, potential work in the right-of-way that can be done at 2:00 AM. We talked about it at study session, that this could be something that when the work's conducted, not as many people are on the road, get in there, get out of there before there's, when there's less issues. I touched on it in the staff report, that an amendment such as this would not necessarily apply to everything. Recently, the Planning Commission considered and recommended unanimous approval on the outdoor processing code amendment. In that rock, or rock crushing for short. In that amendment, the rock crushing ordinance had a component to it in terms of construction hours. I remember at the meeting, we discussed what would the construction hours be for the rock crushing. Those standards, it is identified in this temporary use permit, that you would not be able to exempt a specific section of code that represents what the hours of construction would be. On that one, we had hours of construction would be 7:00 to 7:00, or sunset, whichever came first. This, they would not be able to come in and request an exemption to that standard. I believe we've been tempted to make that clear in the proposed standards that you see in Exhibit 3. Concrete pours are very susceptible to weather conditions, including temperature, humidity, or lack of humidity in our area, and wind, but we don't have wind very often in our area either. Now, as you all know, we have wind often in the summertime. We get the zephyr winds in the afternoons, and we have very low humidity, which affects the quality of the concrete pours. Exhibit 4 and Exhibit 5 were discussed at length on our Tuesday study session. We identified that we would like to use the calculator where we insert the parameters of the concrete pour, and it depicts whether or not the concrete pour would be able to be completed in the hours that the applicant is identifying to be necessary to complete the concrete pour and get optimum results. Additionally, at the study session on Tuesday, we discussed hours of operation for Reno and for unincorporated Washoe County. On the displays above, I did discuss with representatives of both city of Reno and Washoe County. City of Reno does not have codified construction hours, but they do it by entitlement. Earlier in my presentation, I identified that through special use permit, conditional use permits, site plan reviews, administrative reviews, staff condition, excuse me, the Planning Commission conditioned hours of construction through entitlements, handbooks. We talked about that earlier. In 2015, when we conducted the new zoning code, as we call it, we added it as a construction, added construction hours in intensity standards, so that the Planning Commission did not have to consistently do that redundant standard, and staff did not have to continue to add that standard on every entitlement. Currently, Reno adds it as a condition of entitlement when it's in proximity to residential projects. So they use the discretion to identify when it is appropriate. Unincorporated Washoe County identified they do not have a construction hour ordinance, but they've had recent direction to begin to put one together to bring forward through their Planning Commission and their Board of County Commissioners. I do not get the timing on when that amendment would occur, just that it was in the works, so they are looking at something like that. The Planning Commission acts in an advisory capacity in terms of a zoning ordinance. Today, staff is asking that you make a recommendation to the Sparks City Council, where they will review the recommendation of the city council as an ordinance through two hearings. Staff is recommending approval in the draft amendment that you have in front of you. And Chair Pritzos, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much, Jim. There any questions at this time for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
I have a few questions, Jim. Have there been any temporary permits for construction to begin early on Saturdays?
I cannot say for sure, but I believe there have been.
I was just wondering why not expand this amendment to include Saturdays, especially in light of city of Reno starting at 8:00 AM. It seems like that would be a reasonable on Saturdays.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. The discussions with the industry representatives did not request any amendments to the Saturday hours of construction. Additionally, when it was discussed by the, at the city council meeting, the city council did not provide the city manager or staff direction to amend the hours of construction for Saturday. Without that direction on this amendment, we did not propose to change, staff did not propose to change Saturday start time.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions, Jim. I'm curious about the, what's the advantage of having a 30-day permit over a seven-day temporary use permit?
The proponents for the 30 days, the industry representatives discussed that it was cumbersome and, I suppose, bureaucratic to have to come in once a week to request the same, the work for this, excuse me, a temporary use permit for the same work that was going to occur, let's just say, for the month of July. We would issue it for seven days. The temperatures were probably going to be above 90. They were still going to do a large pour, and we would require them to come in the following Wednesday to request the permit again and the following Wednesday. And they are requesting that staff, that this Planning Commission and the city council codify that staff could issue a permit up to 30 days. There is nothing in the municipal code currently that says seven days is the maximum amount of time. But we use that as our staff policy because we felt like the forecasts are seven days, and it was something we could be consistent on and predictable with. And that is, that is why staff utilized the seven, but the industry requested the 30 days.
And I was looking through the temporary use permit section, and it was saying that subsequent permits could be considered. There's no, there's no cap that's proposed. So essentially, a contractor could come, or developer could come, ask for temporary use permit to cover June and then the next month, July, August.
That's correct.
There's no cap. Okay.
That's correct. They could come in, request a 4:00 AM start time for a concrete pour. If the concrete pour was exceptionally huge for three months, staff could consider that, and, but they would have to ask for three, or two subsequent permits after the first one.
And my last question, Mr. Chairman, was, so as I understand it, there was the only outreach that's been done on this code amendment is, was with, was two workshops with the industry. And tonight's meeting is going to be the public hearing on it. And so my question is, is there, were there, why wasn't there any other kind of public outreach, like you did for the rock crushing, that other code amendment?
The direction in the city council meeting in April was identified the hours that the council would like to see. The city manager requested clarification on the public outreach component, and the city council indicated that the Planning Commission meeting would serve as the public hearing for the public.
Okay. And just wanted to thank you for compiling this info on the numbers. It's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey.
Commissioner Carey, Casey Martinez helped compile that information, so she deserves the credit.
I have a quick question, Jim, just kind of to circle back to something that Commissioner Kramer brought up in study session. So just to make sure that I understand, so there is no requirement for notification of neighbors on this, but that it is staff's general policy to make that a condition of issuing the permits? Is that correct?
Yes.
Then I guess, so is there any particular reason why we don't just make that a general requirement if it's almost always required anyway?
Well, it's only required when it's in proximity to residential. And there are cases where the residential project doesn't have any inhabitants in it yet. And so there is no need to require noticing when it's going to be 2,000 feet away from anybody who's living in that neighborhood, because the houses, while being constructed, are not occupied. And that just provides, what I believe, staff the discretion to identify this is an appropriate time to notify the neighbors. And it provides staff the discretion on how far out to notice the neighbors based on the impacts. And to try to codify that is, to an extent, trying to write a computer program for 1,000 different scenarios. It becomes very difficult to write that programming, and that's where, as your staff, we get to exercise the professionalism and our experience of what we've learned, in our opinion. And that's why we did not add that as a condition, just because it varies from project to project.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing item, so is any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Andrew, would you just state your name for the record?
Of course. Alexis Motorex with the Nevada Chapter, Associated General Contractors, representing the commercial construction industry here in northern Nevada. First, I'd like to thank staff for working with us on this. We appreciate their time and are glad to be able to be before you this evening. We are obviously here in support of item CA-1-21. The extension of construction hours from 7:00 AM to 5:00 AM is one of safety, but there are other considerations that could benefit from that extension. The delivery of materials outside of peak traffic hours, deconflicting work hours with businesses that are occupied during normal business hours allows for the staging of materials and placement of equipment to ensure work time is maximized. So there's, there are other benefits to it, but safety, especially during the summer months, is paramount. Getting the crews started earlier so that they can get home before the heat of the day sets in. I'm sure you guys are aware that the Department of Industrial Relations just had a hearing today adopting some heat stress-related regulations to help mitigate the impacts of heat stress. Our crews are out there in long pants, long-sleeved shirts, boots, hats. So managing their exposure to heat is important. And it's also for these reasons that we ask you to consider expanding construction hours on Saturdays as well. We've had brief conversations with staff about maybe 8:00 o'clock, but it is the belief of our membership that the earlier the better. So whatever the comfort level of staff and you as the Planning Commission and ultimately council would be, we would appreciate consideration of an earlier start on Saturday. And again, it's for these same reasons that expanding the ability to get a temporary use permit beyond just seven days, extending that to up to 30, depending on circumstances, needs to be, there are extenuating circumstances besides just weather. And again, if you're, you know, working in a building that is adjacent to an occupied building and minimizing the impact to those occupants, or working in an office where it's occupied and having to work around those, either in the evenings or weekends, to be able to have that, we feel that both of these extensions would lead to a better quality of product, safer environment for the crews that are out there, and just more efficient completion of projects.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a couple of questions?
I have to ask our legal counsel, is this a public comment an appropriate time for, to ask a question?
Yeah, the answer's generally no on a public comment.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I think Alexis may have some good expertise that she may be willing to share with us. Just trying to see if there may be an opportunity to get more of the industry's input on this. Perhaps maybe public comments not the most, maybe after a public comment. It's at your discretion, Mr. Chair, but I'd appreciate it.
I would just sort of worry about possibly opening a can of worms. I know we try to... I know we try to reserve this time for the public rather than ourselves, although I understand where you're coming from in this particular case, but I think for the sake of consistency, it would be best to say no at this time.
Okay.
My name is Frank Lepre. I'm the president of Lepre Construction. I've been in business since 1985, born and raised in the City of Sparks. My family moved here in 1917, so we've been here a long time. I can thank Jim and his team doing a great job on this. I think I support it. I think the industry supports it. We'd like to expand a few things. Today, I understood I broke the law. We worked at Legends and we worked on the second floor where the trampoline place is. Nike's below. We have to have the work. We can't start till 10:00 p.m. and we have to be done by 9:30. We don't have a mechanism for that. We need one. Jim needs one. His team needs one so we can go in there and tell them what we're doing, so we can work together and cover it. There's plenty of ways we can do it. We do it all the time. And concrete pours you talked about, we just... We're doing some at church right now and we are also doing immigrant storages on the corner of Pyramid and Los Altos. It's in Washoe County. Who knew that was in Washoe County? I thought of the City of Sparks. So we had two... We've had two large pours at Summit Church. We started at about 3:00 in the morning. No complaints. We took 40 concrete trucks off the road at 7:00 a.m. Pretty good idea for safety of traveling. So those are the things we need to consider about large pours. The immigrant storage, we had to work out on the street. We had to start at 7:00 at night and we had to be done by 5:30 according to end dot. We worked with the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and everybody else there to do that. We teamed up with Q and D, so they're out at the same time we are. We had the door hangers you talked about. That was a requirement that we do all the time. When you're a contractor, what your first thing you want to do is you want to make friends and peace with the neighbors. First thing we do. We go and knock on doors. We talk to people. We let them know. I did a job at Mount Rose Elementary School. They told me how to do it at night. I said, "It's the wrong thing to do. Let me do the schedule." We did Summit during the day. I had a teacher, she was my boss, and I said, "When we're too noisy, let me know." We never got a call. So we can work things out if we're able to. And if you give us flexibility on the temporary use permit, you would need more flexibility than you have right here. Sometimes they go in on a permit and remodel a convenience store. Do you want me at the convenience store at 7:00 when you're trying to get your coffee? Or do you want me there at midnight when nobody's around? So there's... We just need flexibility. The City of Sparks needs flexibility so we can come in and present our project and our problems to Jim and his team and they can allow us to work and we don't have to break the rules and laws. I think it'd be a good idea to go at 7:00 in the morning on Saturday, but I think the city should have the power and the hammer to say, "You guys did it wrong. You get to start at 9:00 now." So let the people who pay attention work at 7:00 and some of the people who don't quite pay attention and cause problems, start them at 9:00. We work... A contractor who does it right works hard to do that. You know, for us to go out there, it costs money to do that, to keep the cities and everybody happy and all the customers and all the people that live in the area, those are our customers. One thing, too, about winter work...
Oh, sorry. Your time is short, but if you just want to finish your thought real quick, that'd be fine.
I will. Winter work is one thing for winter work with our employees. We might get a storm that moves in and they can only work Saturday and Sunday because that's the only days that are open for them to work. We're taking one day away. And now, usually in the winter, you can't start at 7:00 anyways. You're going to start later. But don't limit these guys to go out and earn a living also. Thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions when it's the right time. Thank you.
All right, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. We will close public comment. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question for staff and I'm not sure if staff may be able to answer this, but I have a feeling maybe someone in the audience may be able to.
I was going to go there.
I was just curious, Jim. One of the things in researching this code amendment, there was a bill this session at the legislature, AB 49, that was addressed by the industry to try to look at the heat exhaustion issue. It's a statewide issue. It's very significant. It's a big deal. And one of the things that they looked at was trying to ensure consistency across local jurisdictions and the homeowners' associations. When kind of looking into that bill, one thing I was looking into was a... I was at the Department of Business and Industry. They were looking at a new OSHA regulation that may address the heat exhaustion issue. I was just curious if that issue had maybe been brought up to staff and had been included in kind of your analysis.
Yes, it was discussed. We did analyze it. It looks as though the bill failed outside of HOAs are required to condition hours further outside of, I believe it was May 1st to, is it September 1st?
Armando. May I? Armando, I'm on to our analysis as the community services director. So AB 249 did pass, but it was ultimately amended to simply prohibit an HOA from restricting construction hours further than a city's ordinance between the dates of May 1 and September 30.
And, thank you, Armando. I didn't mean the bill failed. I mean it failed in terms of it just was reduced to the HOA component. And it was just reduced to the months of the winter months, I'll call it.
Is it staff's opinion that the proposed OSHA or the regulation that went through is... Is that needed in combined with the proposed code amendment?
Ask me that again, please.
Yeah, as I'm thinking, I don't think that made much sense on my end either. Yeah, I guess where I'm trying to go with this is, I think there's certain... There's been a long need, from watching the testimony in AB 249, there was a long need to do something in the industry to prevent heat exhaustion. And is it staff's interpretation that the proposed code amendment is needed in addition to the new regulations from the state on construction worker? Is it neither or kind of a thing?
I don't know that staff approached this code amendment with that level of opinion. The direction, original direction from the city council was to conduct interviews or discussions with the industry representatives, which staff did do. The industry outlined their concerns, including heat exhaustion in working in the summer and the need to begin earlier so they could get their crews out of their... Off the site earlier. Staff's direction was then to report to the city council what they learned from the discussions with the industry, which staff did do. In the April meeting where the city council had the opportunity to sponsor the code amendment, which they did, that's why we're here, they provided the direction that they would like to see it go to 5:00 a.m. Without direction for a Saturday component and specific direction to see the amendment go to 30 days, staff did not necessarily have the autonomy to review other avenues for going outside of that direction.
Thank you. And my last question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go forward.
Thank you. Looking at the, I think it's Exhibit 2, the map on kind of where this proposed code amendment would apply and will not apply. So the blue area is covered by handbook. It would not apply and the non-blue area is where it would apply.
Correct.
Okay.
If the area is owned PD or NUD, Plan Development or New Urban District, would not apply. A very large majority of the northeast parts of the city are zoned with a plan development. The older parts of Sparks are with straight zoning. That's what planners call straight zoning if it's not a handbook. And then more of the newer components of Five Bridges is straight zoning. After the 2015 code amendment and the flexibility that was put into that Title 20 document, we are encouraging developers to utilize the flexibility there and process large developments through the development agreement, which the planning commission has reviewed a handful of those recently. So the answer is, Commissioner Carey, the areas in blue are the planned developments in the city. The green line denotes the city boundary.
Thank you for that clarification. Thanks for the indulgence, Mr. Chair.
No worries. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, may I...
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Andriola.
Based on the industry's two meetings on May 5th and May 10th, you indicated, at least that's how I interpreted, that the request for the hours that are being proposed here was what they requested and that there wasn't any request for flexibility or any request other than the 3:00 a.m. pour for Saturdays.
During the industry meeting, Commissioner Andriola, there was two because one of the attendees that planned to attend the first meeting was unable to, so we conducted a second meeting. Otherwise, there would have been just one meeting. In those discussions, there... I don't necessarily remember. Maybe there was a request, but I don't remember a request for earlier work on Saturday. It did come up through public comment. Alexis, who spoke here today, requested during public comment at the city council meeting for those considerations and the city council did take that into account. But they did not direct staff to amend the hours for Saturday.
Could we do that here?
You can.
Okay.
But it is a discussion between the... It's a discussion with the... For the planning commissioners, not necessarily something that staff can provide analysis on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask for a legal, please?
Yeah, of course.
Is there an opportunity, Mr. Duncan, to actually ask the industry representatives that are here questions?
So typically, what we do is we, if they're presenter of it, that's when the questions are there. We don't ask questions of people that are making public comment, which would be their role today. Obviously, if it's the discretion of this body, someone can make a motion, right, for something and then if the body wants to discuss that, they can do that. And then there can be a second. You can approach it like that. You can make a recommendation again to want to hear a little bit more about the Saturday issue. There could be a motion for that, to hold another hearing. You can make a motion to pass it as staff has recommended it today. There's a bunch of different things that you can do. And of course, during the item, as a body, you can discuss those options.
I just wanted the clarification, especially because one of the representatives who attended actually both meetings is here. So, thank you for the clarification.
All right, thank you. Are there any further discussion?
I don't have... Thank you, Chair Prisso. I don't have any questions, but I did want to make a public comment. Being familiar with the construction industry, there are multiple reasons for crackadon construction. I mean, we mentioned safety, traffic, concrete pours, but what we did not mention was quality of life. You know, construction workers, they work long hours. If they come in at 5:00 a.m. and finish at 4:00 p.m., it allows them to spend more time with their families and, you know, be able to go to those baseball games, soccer games. And the public benefits from early starts as well because they miss the morning and afternoon commuter traffic. And that helps children get to school safely. I not only agree with the staff recommendations to amend the construction hours for special circumstances to 5:00 a.m. on weekdays, I would also suggest that we amend the hours for Saturdays to start at 8:00 a.m. You know, that is the time that the City of Reno has allowed and I think for consistency that would make sense. And if we can do that today, I'd prefer to do that instead of having another hearing on it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Reed. Any further discussion?
I... Mr. Chair, I would just echo the comment in terms of, you know, I think that the flexibility needs to be considered and I think having an opportunity to have the flexibility to work with staff with certain circumstances, having just a beak so cut and dry, I think, limits the opportunity to actually not only support the quality of life issues, but safety concerns and all the things. I think there might be an opportunity for that consideration with staff's input, if you will, or approval. But I think sometimes it is hard. Everyone's trying to accommodate a beginning and an end, but everything in between can be different. And so for me, I think offering the flexibility is important. I guess there's no question there. Clearly, there's no question. I'm just voicing the fact that, you know, what's happening even in a dense area can be different than what's happening in, you know, an expanded area with no population. And I understand the notification. I'm just talking about the accommodation of hours and looking at each as a consideration. You know, I don't know what the burden... I guess I do have a question. Is that a big burden to actually put something like that on staff, I guess, to look at everything and to make that call with each circumstance?
Can be. It can be.
That's what I was thinking.
Keep in mind a consideration, you identified an area that is undeveloped as opposed to an area developed. Typically, the areas that are developed are on the arterials that get to the area that's undeveloped. So now you begin to run concrete trucks 2:00 a.m. and it does affect people who work swing shift or people who work graveyard that are trying to sleep. So it can affect the quality of life. As staff members move in positions and out of positions and the roles become the responsibility of another staff position, they may have a different type of approach. And so there becomes inconsistencies with the development community. So we like to create flexibility, but we also like to create predictability. And that is what we've attempted to do with the standards in terms of someone comes in to do an early concrete pour and you get a different staff member and they say, "Well, I'm going to use 100 degrees instead of 90 degrees." We've provided the concept of the concrete calculator, I'll call it, so that the staff person doesn't have that discretion. If it goes in and it spits out the number, then you say, "Hey, I get to have my permit because it says so." So the code, while we want it to have some flexibility, we do need the ability where staff does not begin to set policy for the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. I really appreciate that. And I may exercise the... Mr. Chair, I may. I may exercise... I know I'm walking down a fine line here, but the guidelines that the attorney just offered in terms of making a motion to get additional information from representatives that are in this room, that participated in this discussion, that seem to have additional information that I think we should consider. And I really would like to... My understanding in terms of procedure is to make a motion for that consideration. And if this body chooses to approve that, then we can move forward with that. Is that the appropriate procedure?
Do a mic. Can we take two minutes off the record just to chat real quick?
Mr. Chair, can we... Staff requests a two-minute... Or staff requests a five-minute recess, Mr. Chair.
Granted.
Thank you.
Now you want... You get to a gal. Now you want, you get to a gavel.
All right, so I guess we are now back in session at 6:54, so what is staff's recommendation?
Commissioner Andrewola, that you post.
Typical, normal board council, I just wanted to ensure that we were being consistent across the city with the way that we're handling questions from this body and moving forward in the past. So just for clarification, your question was, can you put a motion to have them come up and start asking questions? Is that essentially your question?
You mean asking them to ask questions of us?
No, to you to ask, the other way around.
Correct.
Okay. And so if I wasn't clear in my direction, that the recommendation that I was talking about is this body being advisory, you can make a recommendation to the city council of whatever policy you think you want to advise the city council on. And then there'll be another public hearing, obviously, at the city council, as they are the decision makers on it, where the industry can come forward and bring those recommendations. So for consistency's sake, for open meeting law purposes and everything else, making a motion to have them come up to ask them questions is sort of circumventing the the public comment part, and they weren't presenters, and so to stay consistent, that would not be something I would recommend this body do.
I appreciate it. I may have misunderstood, so thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, yes. Thank you, staff, for that explanation. I think that was very helpful. So is there any further, yes, Commissioner Carey?
Mr. Chair, question to our legal counsel. It's my understanding from the staff report that the AGC is the is like the applicant. They're the ones that are requesting this code amendment. I know our rules of procedure allow for us to ask questions of the applicant. I don't know if it may be appropriate under, kind of as, under the applicant umbrella with our rules of procedure that we may be able to question the applicant and their technical expertise on the proposed amendment. Just thought I'd give it another try.
Who are you?
And I, Commissioner Carey, I do appreciate that. So my understanding of it, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, is that AGC wasn't the applicant. It's, it's, the city of Sparks is, and so the applicant isn't present to ask that. So that wouldn't work, I guess.
Jim is the applicant.
That makes sense. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, Commissioner Carey. The bill is sponsored by the Spark City Council. The Spark City Council has to provide direction for the city manager to move forward with the bill sponsorship. And the city council voted unanimously to direct that. Similar to the state legislature, any citizen can request of a senator or assembly person to start a bill, but it does need to be sponsored by the elected in this case, and the Spark City Council did sponsor it. So the city of Sparks, on the city council agenda and staff report, it will say petitioner, and it will say city of Sparks.
All right, thank you for that, Jim. All right, so any other discussion? All right, then with that, I am, who wants to take a crack at this?
I'll take a crack at the motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kramer.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the amendments to sections 20.04.005 Intensity Standards and 20.03.04.0 Temporary Uses of the City of Sparks Municipal Code to amend construction hours and to provide an administrative mechanism to permit working hours outside of the hours of constructions for special circumstances as depicted in CA-1, is CA-1-212, include hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays. Does that work?
I think you meant 5:00 AM.
Yeah, 5:00 PM on Saturdays.
No, the, start.
Start.
Hey, I think you meant 5:00 AM Monday through Friday, not seven.
No, 7:00, 5:00 AM, excuse me, let's start that again. So 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday. Start that again.
So let's just, so the record's clear, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
If you wouldn't mind making them
Let's start the motion again.
And then with the amendment to that, and then you can cite your hours.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the amendments to section 20.04.005 Intensity Standards and 20.03.04.0 Temporary Uses of the City of Sparks Municipal Code to amend construction hours and to provide an administrative mechanism to permit working outside of the hours of construction for special circumstances as depicted in CA-1-21 and to specify the working hours of 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner Reed. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm just kind of first, a little frustrated that we're not provided an opportunity to ask the industry representatives under this forum. I think there's a lot of technical knowledge in some questions that I had. I don't know how that can be solved. Maybe it's another thing to add in our rules of procedure kind of a thing looking forward. But, you know, we have industry representatives here in this room. I was not privy to attend those workshops that were held with the industry. So I'm a little frustrated by that, just throwing that out there. You know, respectfully, I will not be supporting the motion. I think one of the biggest thing I have with the proposed code amendment is really the level of outreach that was done to the community. Looking at that map in Exhibit 1, I think the blue areas are a lot different than the non-blue areas on that map. And I think that all citizens of Sparks should have an opportunity to provide input on this, on this proposed code amendment. Should have an opportunity to weigh in because they will be the ones who will be impacted more. And I'm talking about the folks that are in the non-blue areas. They'll be impacted more by the proposed code amendment. And I don't feel that it's appropriate, with all due respect from the direction from council, and I certainly appreciate what the industry is asking for. It's my preference that staff would have been able to have conducted a public workshop, at least one, and that the outreach and public input would just be limited to this body. I think if you're going to 5:00 AM, and that's going to impact every citizen in Sparks, we should have the ability for all citizens of Sparks to be able to weigh in. You know, the blue areas are a lot different than the non-blue areas, and I think from a potential environmental justice component, that should be considered. I listened to a couple of community workshops over the past couple of years about equity and racial justice. And one of the things that I heard from different people in our community is that, you know, they feel left out of processes from this body and other bodies, and we need to do more to do more outreach. I just disagree with having a code amendment of this substance and have it only be an industry workshop and not have a public outreach that we, similar to what we've done for other code amendments. I just don't agree with that, and I would not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion?
Yes, oh yes, Commissioner West.
I can recognize what Commissioner Carey is saying. At the same time, I do appreciate, you know, looking at the, being flexible with these hours. And to me, it does improve some of the working conditions for the industry. Perhaps, you know, additional changes may be required. But at this point in time, I know these hours have been in place for many, many years. And what I see is some definitely improving, you know, what's happening right now and being willing to change those hours, which is a good thing. So at this moment, I will be able to support the motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner West. Any further discussion? All right, seen none. We have a motion by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner Reed. Madam Secretary, may we please have the roll? Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes with Commissioner Carey voting nay. All right, thank you very much, Jim. Okay, we will now move on to Item 7, which is a general public comment. There are any members of the public who wish to speak? All right, seen none, we will close public comment and move on to Item 8, announcements from staff and commissioners. I think we'll start with staff. Any announcements?
Thank you, Chair Prizzos, Armando Hernandez, Community Services Director. I just wanted to repeat the comments I made at the study session, and that is that you should anticipate that we are going to have meetings on both July 1 and July 15 for this planning commission. Given that we are in the midst of, middle of summer and that potentially some of you may be on vacation, we would ask that you let Secretary Martinez know if you anticipate not being able to attend one or both of those meetings so that we can make sure that we have, you know, adequate qualms. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then any announcements from commissioners? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to Item 9, adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrewola and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Madam Secretary, can we have the roll? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned, and it's not midnight.